Good afternoon, everybody. This is Mike Ostafi, Chair of the Osseo Area School Board. I'd like to bring this meeting of the school board to order. The purpose of this school board's special meeting is to select the next superintendent of Osseo area schools. And the topic will be superintendent search, the second and final round interviews. And the outcome of this meeting will that we will have interviewed both candidates for the superintendent position. Seated on my left and going clockwise is Director Douglas, Director Craig, Director Fortner, and Director Brigette, and again, myself, Mike Ostafi. I just wanted to clarify a few things, or let the audience know, both here and on TV, that there is a link to an online feedback form. It is available on the district website. So please go there to, if you're watching this, or if you're here and you have a device, that's one way of providing feedback, as well as the written feedback that you have. So please use that. We are looking for feedback from all audience members. Feedback received by 3:00 PM for Dr. Pruitt and by 5:00 PM for Mr. Harris will be provided to board members for their consideration. So we will basically close it about one hour after each of the interviews are expected to be over, so that you have time to put that in, as well as then begin watching the next interview. So thank you very much for that. And with that, let's get started.
Good afternoon, Chair Ostafi, school board members, and members of the community and staff. I am delighted, excuse me, to bring back for you Dr. Eric Pruitt. So Eric, would you like to take your seat?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, Dr. Pruitt, thank you very much for coming back to our version of springtime in Minnesota. So this is gonna be somewhat similar to what we did the last time. We have 23 questions, I believe, that we're gonna go through round robin fashion. So I guess we can start with Director Douglas.
All right, thank you. Eric, could you answer this, or I'm sorry, respond to this question? Our district negotiates contracts and collaborates in other ways with three formal unions and a number of other employee collective bargaining groups. Please describe any previous experience where you have collaborated with labor groups, and share how you would approach this work in Osseo area schools, please.
Absolutely. So in Chicago, I had an opportunity to collaborate with the unions in the Chicago Public Schools, both dealing with grievances and issues of concern that the union brought, not only at the local level, but the district representatives for the schools that I supported. In Houston, we still have the same relationship with the unions. It's a right-to-work state. However, we still have opportunities to work with representatives that represent the teachers and our ESPs in the district. And that also involves issues around grievances or concerns that are occurring at the district, at the school level. And any concerns, we actually have what we call consultation, once a month with the unions, where we bring them to central office, and we review our agenda that we'll be presenting to the board. And any issues that they may have, we address in that forum. So our intention is to be very collaborative. And when they do bring issues to us that we aren't aware of, we're quick to be very collaborative and work to resolve those issues.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, could I just?
Follow-up?
Follow-up, please. Could you just share how you would approach collaboration with unions in our district?
So I would approach it in the same way. I think it's very important that, since this district, from what I've learned today, is very mission-driven, and is very focused on its strategic plan and its priority goals, I think it's very important that all those stakeholders be at the table. And so I would approach it from being collaborative and ensuring that they're always at the table when we're making decisions about what's gonna be impacting teachers, our ESPs, but most importantly, what's gonna be impacting our students.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please describe, well, afternoon, I suppose now. Please describe the most important qualities or actions of a superintendent who is an effective ambassador for the school district, and identify your particular strengths and/or vulnerabilities in this area. Please give specific examples of when you have delivered public presentations to business leaders, provided testimony at the state capitol, and/or represented your school district in state or regional organizations.
So I believe, in order to be an effective superintendent and be an ambassador, you have to be very transparent about what's going on in the district. And so that means having really good relationships with media, having and establishing really good relationships with community organizations, our business partners, the universities within the district, and the cities that make, the communities that make up this district. In my current role, I've been responsible, because I'm over the Achieve 180 schools, and those are the schools that are historically underserved and have been underperforming. Last spring, when we presented this proposal to, and the strategy to the board, we were responsible for, again, presenting it during board meetings, and presenting it to the community before the board had an opportunity to vote on a budget to support Achieve 180. In my current role, I have not had the responsibility of going downstate in Texas. That's been the responsibility of the superintendent and the legal team that represents the district.
Thank you.
Dr. Pruitt, in your first interview, you mentioned that Houston has relatively recently begun engaging in equity work. How would you describe your individual racial equity leadership in Houston? And what lessons have you learned from Houston that you would apply here in Osseo?
So I think one thing that I've done in Houston, again, to not, not to belabor it, Achieve 180 is our equity initiative. It's focused on six pillars. And those six pillars are to ensure that all of our schools have high-quality leaders, have effective teachers, have quality instruction in every classroom, that the schools are designed in a way that meets the needs of the students that we're serving, that we have high-quality social and emotional support, and that we, the sixth pillar is around the family and community empowerment. And so our equity work is to ensure that we put resources in schools based on the needs of the communities and students. As an example, I had mentioned in the last interview that all of the campuses have wraparound service representatives, and those people, and those positions are intended to bring social services, social service resources into the school. Every campus has a special education manager that manages how we are, how we're identifying students, to ensure that we're not over-identifying our minority students, and that we're actually monitoring the IEPs and providing the services to the students throughout the school year. What's different is principals had an opportunity, based on the essential positions that we identified for campuses, to identify if they actually needed those positions, and either staff those positions, or use those funds for other designated areas. And so having a nurse, counselor, and social worker were vital, we believe, to every campus. And so if a school happened to already have those positions, we didn't, we did not take the money away, we gave them the opportunity to use those funds for different purposes. I have also identified targeted assistance funds for every school where, you know, although schools do receive funding, sometimes we, there are gaps in how we need to serve, serve our kids. And so all principals have an opportunity to submit requests for additional funding to support learning in every classroom.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure, you.
I just have a, you spoke about the social services being brought into the schools. Can you talk more about, do you partner with anybody in the community, such as mental health professionals, or do you bring those directly into the school as well?
So as an example, we have an organization called My Brother's Keeper. My Brother's Keeper is located in a specific area of Houston, and so that organization assists schools with identifying outside agencies for social services to bring into our schools. Also, the University of Houston has also been a vital partner in identifying how to build clinics in some of our high schools and middle schools. But it depends on the area and the need of each school.
Okay, thank you. So, next question. Minnesota has a strong school choice climate, and our district competes for students with many other public education options, such as charter schools. During your first interview, you asked board members what they believe is needed to attract and retain resident students. Now it's your turn. If you become superintendent of Osseo area schools, what would be the key components of a plan you would lead to ensure that Osseo becomes the district of choice for all families?
And so I had the opportunity to go to dinner with one of the board members last night, and we actually talked about this just a little bit. And so the issue is around innovation. The district is already doing a lot of great things and offers a lot of great programs. And so one of the things that I'm currently doing in Houston is we have early college high schools. And so I think that would be very attractive to our families, where kids can graduate not only with a high school diploma, but then also an associate's degree, which saves our families money for when we send our kids off to college. Another area, as far as attracting families back to Osseo, is looking at our development of CTE programs. You know, what industry programs can we bring back, or bring to the district, that not only would attract our students, but our families? But then we also have to look at, what are we gonna do to attract teachers? And so I had an opportunity to speak with Dante in HR, and he talked about this initiative with going out to universities, HBCUs, to attract teachers into the district. But then for the district, we had to do work around, how do we begin to retain the teachers, which also looks at how we involve the different communities that make up the district.
All right, thank you. Next question. How would you determine the strengths and capabilities of our key administrative staff?
So it would involve listening a lot. I think, I heard it loud and clear, that there's gonna be some grieving with the superintendent retiring. And I understand that. And so I think important to this district, and to the staff within the district, is that I come in with a mind frame of wanting, wanting to learn, wanting to understand before acting. The district doesn't need a dictator. What I've heard so far indicates that we have a really solid foundation around how we are collaborating with one another, how we're trying to break down silos within central office, and get, and get people talking to one another. And so it's gonna be really important that I come in and learn as much as I can, not only about the, about the district, but it's gonna be incumbent upon me to get out into the communities and learn about each community that makes up this district, before making, making decisions that impact kids.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What process do you use to gather feedback on the effectiveness of programs or initiatives? Give us a recent example of how you gathered feedback, for what purpose, and most importantly, what you did with the results.
Around academics, data is always the go-to. But I think more importantly, around when we're looking at student performance, you have to talk to principals and teachers. They're the ones, especially when we're implementing new curriculum in a system. If we don't talk and get feedback from the principals, who are responsible for implementing the curriculum, and then the teachers, who are actually, who are actually the ones in front of kids, then the evaluation is meaningless. Because the data may be telling us one thing, but then if we're getting feedback, that they're not getting the support from central office, that's on us. And so it would be an issue around triangulating as many data points as I can, to identify if a program is effective.
Okay, thank you.
And as a follow-up, have, can you, you know, name something recently you've done within HASD or CPS that would reflect some of that?
So we, in HASD, we have a initiative, similar to what you're doing in Minnesota, it's called Literacy by Three. Our goal is to have all of our students reading by the end of third grade. And actually, we actually want them reading by second grade, because by second, third grade, they need to be able to comprehend what they're reading. And so our evaluation process for that, again, principal surveys, teacher surveys, when we're, when we're providing PD to both school leaders and teachers, we're getting feedback on, on the PD. Was this the right PD that you needed? In addition to the assessments that we administer in the district, those give us an indication of how well we're implementing the curriculum. And I know I said this last time, but the assessments tell us how well we're teaching, not necessarily always how smart kids are. And so during the school year, as we're looking at these assessments, these are indicators as to the quality of PD that we've, that we've delivered as a central office, and our ability to implement that curriculum in the classroom, and monitor it from our school leaders.
Excellent, thank you.
How do you define, prioritize, and maintain critical support services for the district when facing potential budget reductions? Which of those critical support services would you protect, no matter the objections, when making budget reduction recommendations to the board?
Teachers are vital. They're key. And so I would approach it, based on the priorities that the district has set forth, our priorities dictate the actions we take with regards to budget cuts. I would move to protect the classroom as much as possible. And I know it's hard in large districts, but we have to look at how we, how we are staffing central office, and looking at those key departments that are supporting schools. Again, central office, central office's purpose is to support schools, not the other way around. And so my effort would be to protect classrooms, protect teachers as much as I can, because they're the ones doing the work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Under what circumstances would you consider eliminating an extracurricular or co-curricular program? And I've had you had to do this in the past. Please explain.
So I have not had the, I have not had to eliminate extracurricular activities. Based on how our schools are funded in Houston, it's a local decision, where principals are responsible for identifying what sport packages they'll buy into for our district. If having to eliminate extracurricular, extracurricular activities and co-curricular activities, programs, I would really look at the ones tied to academics, and then sports. But then also, before those decisions are made, again, going out, talking with parents, talking with the principals and teachers, and then I think this is where we often miss the mark, talking to students. Students have voice, and should be given voice, when it comes to the programs that we're offering them at their school.
Okay, thank you.
How have you engaged with the city and community in your capacity as a district leader?
Because all 34 of my, my schools in Houston are spread out throughout the city, it's been my strategy to reach out to church leaders, to the community leaders, that know those communities much better than I. And it's, engaging them has been going out to the churches, going out to their offices, and just learning about how they support our schools, but then more importantly, how we can partner together to further support our campuses.
Okay. Number 10. What kind of things have you done to mentor and supervise members of your administrative team? Give us specific examples of what you have found to work the best.
So what I shared last week, we, we, I started a Tier Two Instructional Rounds Professional Development Group. This Tier Two Professional Development Group was solely intended on identifying our Tier Two school leaders, APs, deans, we call, we have people called instructional specialists, teacher specialists, on all of our campuses, that have a desire to be principals. And the sole focus is, because I understand the need to ensure that all of our principals are instructional leaders, Instructional Rounds allows me, one, to train them, but then actually focus what they think is most important from being a principal. And then, and that's instruction. And so that's what I've done for our Tier Two leaders. For principals, I meet every month with all of my principals and provide professional development, again, based on what data is telling us. Also to inform the PD that I've provided principals, for my area, I have an advisory group of principals, where we look at data, and the principals actually give me feedback on the professional development that they think would be most beneficial to the principals. And so what's unique about this, because I have principals from early childhood centers to high school, it gives me an opportunity to differentiate the type of PD that's provided, that's provided to principals. And so when we do meet on, every month, we may split up principals by level, and differentiate the support that we give each, each principal group.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Okay. What are your guiding educational principles and beliefs as you lead a culturally and economically diverse district such as Osseo area schools? Please reference specific researchers or writings that have guided those beliefs.
So first of all, I think adults are responsible for what, how we impact kids and student outcomes. And there's no specific research that talks about that, but just based on what I, my experience as a teacher, principal, and now as an area soup, it's just vital that the adults are responsible for student outcomes, and take ownership of those outcomes. I recently read a book called Multipliers, and it talks about the importance of leaders who, who don't necessarily need to, need to be the smartest person in the room. But versus, the people that are the best leaders are the ones who try to increase the intelligence of the people that they work with. And so that's how I've, that's one way I've approached leadership, my leadership role, and the roles that I've had in education, where it's vital that, one, I know I'm smart. However, me being smart doesn't get the job done. It's having a team of people around me, who are also just as smart as I am, and where I acknowledge that they're just as intelligent as I am, and push them to higher levels of performance. Specifically around culturally and economically diverse, leading a culturally and economically diverse district, I'm thinking of Gloria Lass and Billings, in her work around culturally responsive pedagogy. It's vital that, around being culturally relevant, we also acknowledge implicit and explicit biases with our staff. This allows us to not only have those tough conversations around race, around equity, but it also hopefully builds capacity in a district that's dealing with change. Change in population, a change in wanting to make our teaching staff more diverse. Dealing with those issues and being able to have those conversations will only benefit, will only benefit our, our district, and eventually, our students.
Thank you.
How do you weigh the rights of all students and teachers to have a safe learning environment against mandates, against suspensions, or other punishments?
So we have to, we have to follow the rules. But we also, and I'm speaking as a father, and I'm actually dealing with this right now. I have, I'm sorry if I'm off-topic, but my, my, my six-year-old, who's in kindergarten, all of a sudden, she hadn't missed any days this week, and last week, and all of a sudden she was sick for two days in a row. And so we had a conversation with her, and she eventually told us, this young man is hitting her in class, and kicking her. And she was just terrified to go back to class, go back to school, let alone going, going back to her class. And so this really hits home with me, because, one, I want the other child to be in school, but I also want my daughter to feel safe. And so I think that we have to look at how we look at discipline, where it doesn't turn into punishment. I think that when we think about the prison, the school pipeline, and I think how we look at how we discipline students is really important. And I think being restorative is more important than being punitive.
Okay, thank you. So what are the standards you use for judging whether a board of education is doing its job?
The policies, the policies that we pass, and how we govern. One of the most, one of the most important decisions that a board will make is the superintendent that they hire. And they, they have to ensure that that superintendent fits within what they believe is gonna be effective for their district. And so I, I'll judge the board based on their ability to keep the interest of students first. When we, when we stop putting the interest of students first, then we won't be on the same page.
Thank you.
Thanks.
A four-year college education is not desired by or attainable by everyone, and is not needed for the majority of jobs in this state. How do you plan for, provide for, and measure the academic success of those students who wish to develop skills in other areas?
I mentioned it before, as far as looking at expanding our CTE offerings throughout the district. I think that being able to look to our industry partners in this area, and identifying, you know, what are those jobs that are gonna be available to our students in three, five, seven, 10 years, and building our CTE programs around that. Then we also have, as a former Marine, you know, we do have the military, but then also looking at our two-year vocational, our two-year colleges, vocational colleges, and our four-year institutions. The idea of a college and career is real. Everyone is not ready for college. And you're speaking to someone right after high school, that did not go to college first. So if we give students options, but then also give them the skills to be successful in life, eventually, some of them may find their way back to school and continue with school.
Thank you. Number 15. What has been the most stressful situation you have had as a district leader? How do you handle personally stressful situations?
So I think it's obvious, with me coming from Houston, Hurricane Harvey was probably one of the most stressful events that I've experienced in my educational career. The sheer devastation that the, the district, let alone the city, experienced, experienced, it was just unimaginable. And so the way we dealt with that was, because we had a really good team, our ability to be collaborative, being transparent about what we were experiencing throughout the entire district, asking for help, and breaking down, you know, those silos within our system, and communicating, communicating on a regular basis was vital to us, instead of starting school two or three months later, we started, we were able to start classes two weeks later. And that, and that was a testament of, of the leadership from not only the superintendent, but the team that he put around him. And so I think the team, the team you have helps, the team I have, helps me deal with stress, because we're constantly supporting one another and communicating with with, with one another to identify solutions to the problems that we're experiencing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we experience different achievement levels across our buildings that are predictable by the socioeconomic status of our residents. How do you support the students of both sides of the economic coin?
I think this is where in education we, we fall short because we, we continue, when we say all students learn, w- w- we pit supposedly the haves against the have-nots. And so i- if we have students that are, are performing at high levels, we have to su- support them to do even better versus the kids that aren't doing as well and, um, we have to support them. And then, and this is where equity comes in. I- if we are truly about equity, it shouldn't matter how high performing you are because we are going to be able to identify a, a growth area for you no matter what your performance level is. And so i- if you are a student who are, who's at, who's performing at the meats level in, i- i- um, in the district, how are we going to move you to masters? If you're, if you're currently a student at masters, how are we going to in- increase the number of AP, uh, courses that you're taking? You know, i- i- if we have the vision for early colleges for this district a- and you're a meat or masters, uh, performer, are how are we encouraging, encouraging those students to, to pursue those early college, uh, opportunities if, if we made them available? Versus our students who aren't performing as well, equity drives our budget and our priorities. And so we're, we're going to give tho- those students who aren't performing as well the supports they, they, the, the supports they need. They may need extra tutors, they may need, uh, additional coaches. The teachers that are supporting those students may need coaching, additional coaching. So i- i- if we are truly about equity, it shouldn't matter what your, especially if you're a student, if we're all about students, your performance level shouldn't matter. I want, we want every student to perform well, not just the, the students who aren't, who are, uh, performing below expectations.
Thank you. Sorry, just writing here. Okay. How do you define prioritize and maintain critical support services for the district when facing budget constraints?
Could you repeat that one more time?
Sure. How do you define prioritize and maintain critical support services for the district when facing budget constraints?
I think, again, we, we go back to our goals and priorities. Th- th- those drive what supports we give, wh- wh- the, the supports that we give, um, our, our schools. If we continue to operate around what's best for students, that will dictate what programs or projects might be cut. Um, and again, our, our goal would be to minimize the impact on the classroom while looking to central office and those support areas that support our schools to see how we can downsize, um, those areas of support. However, our, my job would, again, would be to protect the classroom as much as I can.
All right, thank you. So in your judgment, what are the three most critical things a good principal does?
Observation and feedback. So the, a, a good, uh, an effective principal is in classrooms every day and providing feedback to teachers every day, whether that be, uh, formally or informally. A good principal provides high-quality PD to their teachers and, and, and high-quality differentiated PD to a- all teachers. And an effective principal communicates and collaborates with, with the staff and community.
How do you put, how do you provide the oversight and/or lead others who have direct responsibilities in a district this size? Specifically, how do you hold other accountable, others accountable for delivering the mission of the district?
So in a district this size, i- i- it could be, it could be very easy for a, a superintendent to become a tyrant or a dictator where he or she has to make decisions on every aspect of the district. Um, I recently read an article, it was actually sent to me this morning, where leaders make missteps when they think that they're a leader because of their title. And so I think the way you lead a district of this size is you empower the people in leadership positions. Again, going back to teams, if I'm always mic- if I'm, if I'm micromanaging my assistant superintendents, I limit their ability to become great leaders. And my, and my oversight is holding my cabinet accountable whereby then they're, uh, they're holding the people that report to them accountable. And so i- it's, it's not necessarily a top-down, it's we're going to spread out responsibility for all, for, for leadership and then hold our teams accountable for the outcomes that we've identified.
Thank you. Uh, number 20. If we were to ask your district reports or administrative team to describe your qualities or characteristics in three adjectives, what would they say? How about your teachers, classified staff, or board members?
Collaborative. Funny. I know it's hard to believe, but funny, I have a sense of humor and focused.
Thank you.
Can I ask just a follow-up? Would that be different for any of them? Teachers or board members or staff? Same for all?
It's same for all because, again, although I have the title of area superintendent, I'm Eric. And I, I, I treat everyone the same, whether, whether you're a board member, a teacher, a principal, because we're all a team and your ideas are just as valuable as mine.
Uh, sorry. I was writing. Um, what are the benefits and drawbacks of ESSA and Common Core curriculum?
So the benefits, um, of ESSA and Common Core is that nationally, and we're not a Common Core state in, in Minnesota, and so nationally, we, we have a common set of standards, and thi- and this is the benefit, we, we have a common set of standards, um, by which hopefully all kids are being judged by. The drawback is each state is being given an opportunity to, to interpret how we assess those standards i- in every state. But then also with ESSA, the strong focus on state assessments, um, is, is one time in the school year that determines how we view kids. And I think that we need a, a more holistic picture around how our kids are performing, uh, and that allows districts to be more flexible in how we serve, um, all of our students.
Thank you. Okay. Why should we hire you to be our next superintendent?
So I think that I'm the best candidate for this position because I've been doing the, 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 the challenges that you're dealing with now with regards to equity, the district being diverse, the district, uh, wanting to s- to identify solutions for all kids is work that I've, that I'm engaged in now and I've been successful with in the past. You should choose me because this was a family decision at the end of the day and Kenya, my wife, um, feels that this is the best place for us to, to, to be moving forward. Um, I consider education a, a calling and I believe that Oseo is my next assignment in that calling.
Thank you. There's, um, that was the end of the formal questions. We want to also go on with some other follow-up questions, but before we do that, I wanted to give you an opportunity right now to ask questions of us. And this is scheduled until, uh, two o'clock. We still have plenty of time, so.
Okay.
Please feel free to, uh, ask away.
So, again, thank you for inviting me back. Um, I, I've actually really enjoyed this morning. Uh, um, you have a great staff here, um, in central office. And I'm, I've, I've learned a lot. And so I'm really interested in, in what data does the, does the, the school board look at as far as just indicators that the, the district is on track outside of the end of year state test?
I, I, I think we, we have all the state tests. We have the MCAs, we have, uh, performance on AP exams, we have graduation rates. Uh, we also do a lot of internal surveys to better understand how, uh, kids and parents view the district. Uh, so we have done some of those surveys, we have done surveys based upon why, uh, parents have, have pulled their kids out of the district to, to better understand areas that we have to work on. So, um, you know, that's the data we look at from a, a performance standpoint and I, I, I always want to see more of it. You know, data will set you free, uh, from, you know, from implicit or explicit biases of how you look at things. So, you know, help provide as much as you possibly can. And then another piece of it is, um, you know, looking at the finances. Uh, you know, that, that's part of my background and, and very focused on ensuring that there is, uh, a focus paid by the district, by leadership on the efficacy of programs and that we're getting what we pay for. And, and that's how, you know, I, I will look at things and, and look at the next leader of the district.
Uh, yeah, as a school board member, every year we have, um, at least one board session, work session dedicated to looking at, um, very specific statistics. I mean, it goes all the way down to student level. I mean, it's pretty impressive, the amount of data that we collect and interpret from. Um, and it's also a good reminder, we get to hear, you know, just how each site deals with that data and, um, the improvements we can make. Um, the board gets just a general overview, you know, each site is different. Um, so it's helpful to see those, those areas and those statistics. And when we come together as a board with cabinet and leaders in the district, again, it's just really helpful to get those statistics and see, look at that stuff, so.
Uh, I would just say, really simply put, as a board, we tend to be very data-driven, often asking for more. Um, our cabinet has been amazing in, um, when we have a work session, they're very well-prepared with the data to support the presentations that they provide. Um, and that has been re- really helpful because we do ask a lot of questions about the data. Um, so simply put, regardless of what the topic is, um, aside from general feelings or perceptions, we want facts too, so.
I know I personally like the, uh, balanced scorecard that's been developed. Um, I think that helping us focus not on, not just on, um, on a static achievement level, but on growth, I think is really, really important because we need to meet kids where they are and grow them from that point. Um, and that helps keep us on track with our programs and services.
I'll just add a couple specifics to that point. Um, right now we're dealing with a new technology initiative where we've, uh, engaged teachers a lot and students to decide what devices we're going to roll out because we're up on a lease with our new, or with our, um, technology program. So we engaged a lot with the students, staff and teacher, or yeah, teachers. And then, um, we're also rolling out a new math curriculum. So again, teachers, staff, people in the schools that it affects directly, we've worked really hard to hear from those people to know which one's going to work best. And then Patricia also, she shares a lot, there's a framework that they have developed, that always comes back to students. And so in a lot of our work sessions, we always review that framework and we always go back to what the most important thing is and that's students. So we're always questioning, is that what we're going to be focusing on with this new initiative, the students for specifics?
Outside of in- increasing student performance, which is number one, um, what needs to be accomplished next year?
That's a good question. There's a lot.
Uh, uh, you know, let me take a stab at that. I, I think next year, uh, or in the next year, you know, the, the most important thing is to bring on a new leader and integrate that, uh, leader into the district, uh, help inform that leader of what's going on and, and ensure that the leader is successful. Uh, without a doubt, that's the most important job that I think this board has is to hire the right superintendent and to ensure that the support is in place, uh, that the person will be successful. So I, I think that's one of the biggest issues. Uh, continuing our programs, continuing our priority work, uh, a, a big impact is going to be this new technology initiative and the new math curriculum in the lower grades. Uh, those are two things where we've spent a lot of time and money on so far and will be spending a lot of effort, uh, and a lot of money on in the future. Uh, and, and those are critical items that need to be implemented, uh, successfully. So, uh, those are, uh, a- a- as well as the, you know, the ongoing, uh, foundational equity work and everything else that we're doing, those are the two big ones that are going to take up a lot of people's time and, uh, need, need to have the proper focus.
Just to add to what Mike just said, um, I 100% agree with everything he said, very important, but I, I just wanted to add that we also are going to need to support our staff, um, during this time of change because it is a, it is a big change. Kate's been with us for a very long time and she is very well-loved and respected. And, um, it's, it's going to be hard for some people. And additionally, we've had, um, some changeover in our cabinet and that also is going to, um, impact our staff directly. And so supporting them through all these changes that are happening with the curriculum and everything, so.
I would like to add about, um, uh, we have a group right now, enrollment capacity group that is studying, um, a bunch of different things going on in our district, uh, possibly things such as building a school, changing boundaries, uh, looking at adding on to schools. That is a big thing that is going on in our district as well, and I think it, it's super important that we continue with that group and continue to keep our community members very well, um, versed in everything that we're doing and keep everything public with that because that's going to be a big decision, change, whatever, um, decides to get decided upon will be a big deal.
And I'll just add, just kind of an ongoing theme for me, at least the way I see it is, is the classroom safety, going back to classroom safety. Um, you know, navigating all of that, what, what that all entails. And you, you touched on it, you know, discipline and making sure it's not punitive, you know, it just holistically approaching that issue. I think it will always just be ongoing, but it's top priority for me as well, so.
And I'd just echo what the rest of the board said as well as, um, you know, focusing on continuing with the initiatives that we have in place, making sure that we, um, do them justice and, uh, finish them up appropriately. Although that said, a lot of it is just ongoing work that we'll just continue.
Uh, yeah, just to add one more thing, I just wanted to say, um, when Stephanie brought up our enrollment and capacity management committee, um, we actually have several committees that are made up of, um, staff and community members, stakeholders, and sometimes students. And we will definitely need to continue to support those committees and keep them involved and transparent. Our district is very engaged in what's happening in our community and then I feel like they're becoming more and more engaged and they want to know more and be involved more. So continuing all that work to keep everyone in the loop.
Thank you. Uh, let me go with some follow-up questions. You mentioned your equity program is basically the Achieve 180 Schools program. And you mentioned the six pillars. And I was wondering if you can do a little bit deeper dive on those six pillars, how they were maybe arrived at, if you had anything to do with that, and how they are being implemented and, uh, you know, maybe some of the, uh, the, the budgetary issues around that.
Of course. And so the, uh, six pillars again are leadership excellence, teacher excellence, instructional excellence, school design, um, family and community empowerment, and socially emotional support. And so with Achieve 180, 15 And so, with Achieve 180, $15 million was allocated for the program. Part of that $15 included teacher stipends for all of our core content teachers in every Achieve 180 campus. And so, the teachers' retention stipends for all of our teachers and then stipends for all of our school leaders that led those, that lead those campuses. In addition, another part of the $15 million included all of the essential supports that we identified that all of our campuses had to have. And so, the school nurse, the counselor, and then the librarian. Those were three positions that every campus from our early childhood center up to the high schools had to have on every campus. In addition, all of the campuses have what we call teacher development specialists for, for those campuses. The teacher development specialist is basically a teacher-coach. And their responsibility is to be in the classroom and coach, support, plan with teachers. So, that's just a general overview of how some of the funds were used, that the $15 million was allocated. Around leadership excellence, the, the, the idea with leadership excellence is every school had an experienced principal that had turnaround experience. And they had to go through an intensive interview process through the Achieve 180, what we call the school's office. And then, they were offered the positions. But then it also involves providing additional PD for all of the school leaders. And that includes the monthly PDs that are held with me, in addition to ongoing PDs that are managed through our curriculum department and other departments within the district. Around teacher excellence, we went through a value-added system of identifying teachers that have proven to be effective, working in schools that were similar to mine in Achieve 180. And they were given opportunities to apply, to go to these schools. And we use the incentive stipends to lure them to the schools. But, to be honest, teachers actually don't do it for the stipends. It's nice, but when we've talked with the teachers as to why they wanted to go to an Achieve 180 campus, they, the majority of the time, they tell us that, you know, they wanted to make a difference. I used to go to that school, or they had a relative that went to that school, and they just wanted to see the school do better. And the stipend just happened to be a bonus. With the teacher excellence came, we develop PDs that we deliver every Wednesday. And so, it, we have a train-the-trainer model where we have a representative from the campus come to Central Office. We train them on the topic that we'll be delivering on Wednesdays. And then, they go back to the campuses and deliver that PD every Wednesday. And we've been doing that since November. The instructional excellence has been looking at how we are, what assessments we use to look at how students are performing. And so, we have a universal screener that we use to help us identify how our kids are doing. And then, we have a program, which is Star 360. And then, we also have Imagine Learning that is, that is a support around literacy and math for all of our students. We also use Achieve 3000 in our secondary schools to additionally support our students around literacy. With school design, we looked at how we are designing programs for all of our schools in Achieve 180. And so, some of our campuses are dual-language. We have magnet programs. We have, we don't have any gifted programs in my schools. However, looking to next year, we have identified two schools that are applying to be IB going into next year. And what's been really important to our board and to our superintendent is reinforcing the feeder pattern system in our, in our city. We wanted to make sure that we are supporting our neighborhoods by attempting to keep as many families and students in the neighborhoods that allow them to go from their elementary school to the high school. That's a natural progression. And so, we've really looked at how we are supporting that effort by ensuring that if one school is a magnifying, if a high school is a magnifying arts, we want to ensure that it has magnifying arts in the middle school and in the elementary school. With social, socially-emotional support, that's where the wraparound specialist comes in, our face manager to support our schools with bringing in social service supports for our kids and our parents. But then, with our face manager, they're able to help principals bridge that gap between the school and community and coordinate events that allow parents to come in a lot more and keep them informed about what's going on in the school and in the district. And then, family and community empowerment. My previous superintendent is, the reason we don't call it family and community engagement is because if something happens to a parent's child, they're going to be engaged. And so, we need to teach our, our parents or help them be empowered. And so, how do you advocate for your child in an effective way? By breaking down those walls where they're able, where they're able and willing to go up to a campus and talk to the teacher and talk to the principal about what's going on. And on us, it's really important that, as far as being transparent and using data and keeping our parents informed, that all the assessments that we are administering, that we are sharing those with parents. We are providing trainings for them to make sure that they understand what our reading level is, how they can support reading levels at the library, what the math assessments mean, and how they can support their child in math. And it's really just empowering them to support the school, but more importantly, support their child in school and, and at home.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just have a question, but it wasn't a question, I just want to ask it. I kind of see a lot of things through an early childhood, community ed, education lens. And so, I'm just wondering if you could speak to, first of all, your early childhood experience and what you have with your, with that in your district you're currently in? And then, also partnership between the community ed piece. It's a really large piece in our district. And they offer a lot of services and programs to students, community members, parents throughout the district. And I was just wondering if you could talk some about that?
Absolutely. So, you're talking to a former first-grade teacher. So, not, not pre-K or kindergarten, but I think it's early enough. And so, for me, early childhood, especially in our schools where our minority students are struggling, is vital. And we need to ensure that, you know, pre-K programs are made available to our families that need it. And so, with, with pre-K, literacy cannot be understated. If we don't do a good job of building the literacy in our students in those, those schools that are underperforming in this district, we'll continue to underperform. And with regards to the community partnerships, I think what's important is, again, if we're reaching out to our parents, they're going to tell us what they need. One of the mistakes that I've made in the past is, because we want to have programs and bridge that gap between the school and community, you know, we'll create programs without first talking to the parents who the programs are for. And so, I think that what makes community outreach and these community programs most effective is if the parents are at the table. And that's represented through a PAC, the PTO, PTA, and getting feedback from our parents that'll tell us what they want and what they need. In one school, it may be, you know, we really want GED programs, a GED program at the school. At another school, it may be, I really want to learn how to use Word. Or, I want to, I want to learn how to use email. And so, it just depends on the community. And we can't assume that just because a community organization offers services, that it's going to be the service that we apply throughout the entire district. It has to, again, differentiated is used, is overused. But it has to be differentiated based on the needs of the communities that we serve.
Thank you.
So, following up on your answer regarding, you know, the issue around college education not desired and CTE could be a focus. If you could, give me a little bit more, you know, background information on the CTE programs that you've been involved with, or how you've promoted them, or how you've supported them?
So, CTE in the nine, the seven out of the nine high schools that I have is huge. And it's, it's been vital to the success of our schools. We have anything from maritime certification in one school, culinary arts, cosmetology, auto mechanics, welding. And so, we have a wide variety of CTE programs that we offer throughout the high schools that I support. And the, one way I, and it's kind of selfish on my part, one way I promote culinary arts is during my principal meetings, I have the high school, high school kids cook lunch for us. And so, that's been really big because, you know, the kids are really excited about being able to come to Central Office and provide meals. And they're actually really good. But then, also, the principals, the elementary, middle principals, who aren't always exposed to these types of programs, see that, oh, this, this high school's in my feeder pattern. I might encourage Eric to pursue culinary arts because he, he, you know, he may have identified that as something that he wants to pursue. And so, again, I'll eat to support our kids. And then, this is real big in the, in the district because the, the parents want vocational ed in the schools because they, they, they understand that not all of our students desire to go to a four-year college or a two-year college or vocational college. And we want to give them as many options as we can to be productive citizens after they graduate from high school.
As a follow-up to that, can you talk a little bit more about the specifics of the graduating with associates, along with their diploma, how that could work?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, I currently, and I currently don't have any early college high schools in Achieve 180. However, the schools that I supported last year, I had three high schools. And so, what that, that involves identifying a partnering college or university that would allow us to offer credit courses during their high school year. And it's, it's, it's amazing seeing the kids matriculate through high school. And, you know, we often underestimate what kids can do. But the kids that I supported last year do a very good job of managing their time, getting support to manage both the high school requirements and then also the requirements in order to get their associate's degree by the time they leave high school. But it's, it's a partnership and it's a signed agreement between the district and that university around providing those supports to those campuses.
And is it the child or the student goes to the university? Or is it more through like AP classes that are offered at the school?
So, AP classes are separate. And so, you have the colleges, the courses that allow you to get college credit. And then, if you happen to take AP courses, that, you know, you'll be able to take the AP test and get credit that way. But it's, the teachers have to be certified in the area that they're teaching. But it's based on that agreement between the university and the district.
Okay, thank you. And I have one, one last question. So, in the position of superintendent, you have, you will be pulled in many different directions, whether it be special interest groups, you know, constituents, whoever it may be. You're also going to be the face of our district. So, you're going to need to be comfortable with media, and we touched on it a little bit. Our superintendent presents our points of pride. Our superintendent delivers our State of the District address. Our superintendent will be out at, you know, Association of Metro Realtors or, you know, she'll be, she will address different groups. Are you prepared for that? Are you comfortable with the thought of being the face of our district?
Yes. And so, I consider myself to be a very humble person, but that's part of the job. And I, I think it's really important that, one, I represent the district well. And so, I'm more than willing to, you know, be the face of the district and market the district and advertise what's going on that's great within the district. But I also think it's really important that we highlight the great school leaders that we have, the great teachers. And so, I would really try to take a lot of the attention off myself, albeit in the, the, the public's face. I think that we need to look at how we better market the school district and put our school leaders and teachers out there to, you know, make sure that, you know, everyone understands the great things that are going on in the district.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, going back to, you know, some of your, you know, capabilities and leadership, tell me why you applied for the Achieve 180 schools, or why did you accept that position?
I don't want to say I was voluntold, but I, I, I think it's based on, so, I, I went to Houston as a school support officer and from Chicago. And I had schools throughout the district. And I was really successful with, we have, the schools that aren't doing well, we say they're in IR, so improvement required. I did a really good job of moving schools off IR as an SSO. And in my second year, I was part of a team, and we called it the Elementary Transformation Schools Office. And we had, and we were given over 40 campuses that were improvement required. So, all of the low-performing campuses that were in our district. And in one year, and with a brand-new team, we got half of the campuses off of IR, which, you know, is good. And eventually, in 2016, I was asked to apply for the area superintendent position of then the South Area Schools. And then, once we got the budget approved for Achieve 180, we did a reorg in the fall, right before Harvey. And I was asked if I would want to lead the Achieve 180 campuses. And I've never been one to shy away from a challenge. And I said yes. And I think that just comes from my experience as a teacher. When I was a principal, I was a principal in Inglewood at a wonderful school, local, local two elementary school. But it was, it was a tough area, it was a tough school. And so, I think I gravitate towards challenges. And with putting good people around me and having good leaders with me, I've been able to experience success.
Can you share some specifics of what you did to move those schools off of IR?
So, you're stealing kind of my, some of my thunder.
Sorry.
I'm going to be presenting this. No, no, I'll answer it. And so, I, I can't express how important relationships are. Because no, no matter what my, no matter what your title is, if you don't form really good relationships with the people that report to you, they won't believe in what you're asking them to do. And so, my success is due to the relationships that I've been able to build with the principals that I worked with, with the school support officers that I worked with. But it also revolves around me being an instructional leader. I value, I value my ability to go into a school and identify where a principal needs to improve and where teachers need to improve. I think that I'm very, I'm very good at going into a campus and looking at instruction and providing high-quality feedback to principals and teachers. And then, for me, that's what gets schools off IR. It's a person's ability, despite being able to crunch numbers, save money, save positions, it comes down to my relationship with the principal, the principal's relationship with the teacher, and their ability to respond to the feedback that you give them on a weekly basis. And so, it's a mixture of being in, being in classrooms, being in schools often. And so, it's a mixture of being in, being in classrooms, being in schools often, is what aided in getting those schools off IR. Delivering high-quality PT, PD tailored to the needs of that specific campus. And so, one campus may, may need a PD around building a, a more high-quality literacy framework by which to operate on. Another campus may, may need PD on improving their data protocols, and as far as how we're looking at data and making decisions around our data. And so, it just depend, and so, my, my ability to be very flexible about how I go in and operate and give the principals and teachers what they need, aided in my ability to get those schools off IR. But then also, I'm going to come, I'm going to come back to it, my success was dependent upon the leaders I worked with, the principals that I worked with, and then now, my success is dependent upon the school support officers that are on my team. I don't micromanage my leaders, I allow them to lead. I provide, I, I think, I consider myself, in, in addition to be, being an instructional leader, I consider myself to be a coach. And it's my responsibility to help my school support officers get better at doing their job. And it's, I think it's fundamentally my responsibility to train them to take my job. If I don't do that, I, I, I'm, I'm working, I'm working scared versus working from a, from a mind frame that it's my, it's my job to help people do better and get better.
Thank you. One last one.
Good.
Sorry. Thank you for bearing with us through these questions. Okay, so the way I view the role of the superintendent is the board is going to be heavily dependent on your decision-making. We, we're relying on you to, you know, whether it's budget, you're going to lead us into budget decisions, you're going to lead us into organizational decisions, we need to rely on your expertise in these areas. That's not our day job, that's going to be your day job. So, how do you see yourself building a stronger relationship with each of us, moving forward, and building that relationship of trust? Because these are huge, huge decisions that we make. Anything, anything specific to build relationships with us as the board?
I, I, I think, and it's, it's interesting that you say that because in cabinet, they said what they're most proud of is the trust, and one of the things they said they're, they're most proud of is the trust and transparency within the district. And so, someone's ability to build trust. But that's also what, what I think the district is also fearful of with having a new superintendent come on, is, is this person going to be willing to build those relationships, to establish trust, and be transparent? And so, I think that for me, working with the individual board members, it's having individual meetings with you and addressing your concerns around your areas of concern. And keeping you as informed as you want to be informed until you tell me, Eric, stop. I can wait until a board workshop to get that information. So, it's, it's very important that I meet with each of you individually to get to know you, so, and, and for you to get to know me. That way, the more we're meeting, the more we're talking, the more honest we are with one another. Even when it's, even when we have to have tough conversations, when, when we may not necessarily, uh, may not necessarily agree with one another, I think if we are, if we do a good job of, if I do a good job of building a relationship with all of you, we're going to be able to have those tough conversations to where you're comfortable with me, and I'm comfortable with you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Uh, could I just add on to that, or ask something kind of to do with that? One thing that Kate has always said to me anyways is, I'll meet you where you are. And as a board, ever-changing, depending on, you know, who gets elected in, we all come from different backgrounds, we have different lifestyles, we have different home communities, and some, some of us have to meet during the day, and some of us have to meet in the night. And life happens, and she's always been very good about, you know, saying, okay, you know, if, if you can't come to the ESC to have your one-on-one this month, you know, I can meet you at the coffee shop by your house, or I'll, I'll come to your house, or, um, you know, and the same thing with cabinet members. I feel like this past year has been painful for a lot of people on a personal level. And there has been so much support and coming around each other, like, team, other team members stepping in and filling in roles that aren't theirs. And Kate was always very good about saying, you know, it's okay, we understand, life happens. We're, we're here, we're going to help you, we're going to support you. And, you know, her kids are older, and so she doesn't have to run home to her kids and things like that. How will you be able to handle those types of situations with staff and board members?
And so, in my current role, I've, I've met board members at convention centers, at Starbucks. My office is in Central Office in Houston. And despite what people think, I, I actually liked being out in the field, being in classroom, no, being in, in schools. And so, I, I think it's, it's my job to, to meet people where they are, to, to make the work as efficient as possible. That, that's, that's my job. We need to make sure that the, the district continues to operate at a high level, and I'm willing to do what it takes to make that happen.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Any statement, any, any questions for us again?
No, again, I, I just thank the, the board again for inviting me back. I, I really appreciate your time. I, I really appreciate you giving me an opportunity to, to meet with cabinet and some of the Central Office staff members. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to getting out into schools today.
Good.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it very much, and enjoy your travels for the next hour and a half around the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I wanted to remind everybody here and those watching that there is a link on the district website for online feedback. Please use it if you can, it will help collating all the feedback. And for this round of, of the interview with Dr. Pruitt, feedback will be open until 3:00 PM. So, please submit any feedback you have by 3:00 PM. And with that, I would like, the next round, the next interview is at 2:30. So, I would like to, I will make a motion to go into recess until 2:30. And at that time, will we interview Mr. Harris? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to nothing, we are in recess until 2:30.
Thank you.
All right, welcome back, everybody. I would like to make a motion to reconvene this special board meeting of the Osseo Area School Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting has now been reconvened at 2:34 PM. Just as a reminder to everybody, please turn your phones off or turn them down. Also, there is a link to an online feedback form. It is available on the district website. It is linked off the homepage. Please use that if you're watching on TV or here in the audience to submit feedback. Or if you're in the audience, there's also a paper feedback form. And the feedback for Dr. Pruitt, who was earlier today, will be open until 3:00. And the feedback for Mr. Harris, who we're about to interview, will be open until 5:00 o'clock. So please get your feedback in for both candidates. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Judy McDonald.
Thank you, Chair O'Staphy. And again, good afternoon, school board members, community members, and staff. I am absolutely delighted to introduce to you Mr. James Harris, who's currently the superintendent at Daniel Boone School District in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania.
Berks County, Pennsylvania.
Berks County, Pennsylvania. So you can go to your normal seat over there. Thank you.
Well, welcome. And to set the stage, just wanted to go through the process. We have 23 questions. First four differentiated based upon feedback from the first round. The rest have been the same. You have a list of the questions there. And we'll have time to... The last question is if you have anything for us, and then we'll go into any follow-up questions that we may have. So with that, if you'd like to make a statement, or we can go right into questions.
I'm just happy to be back here in Minneapolis. I see it's still snowing.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that baseball season's been put on hold a bit because of snow. Once again, I had a tour of the district today. It's great. The facilities are fantastic. Everyone's been really nice to me, and I want to say thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Want to get started?
Yes. In your first interview, you gave several examples of actions you undertook on your own. Please provide examples of initiatives that required intentional collaboration between you and staff or community stakeholders. What lessons did you learn, and how have you applied them?
Well, being the superintendent of a district, everything I do is in collaboration. I learned a long time ago, I just can't tell someone what to do. Have to get buy-in. And generally, the collaborations come from initiatives that are areas that have to be done. So one of those areas was, or is, bringing back full-day kindergarten to my district. Years ago, through budget cuts, the board decided to reduce the full-day kindergarten. When I arrived, that was one of the initiatives that the administrators sought to move forward with. And being early childcare, I mean, early childhood education is extremely important. We felt that was a necessity and part of our overall academic plan. So in working with the principals of the elementary buildings, my assistant superintendent put together a plan for funding, for staffing, for recruiting, and enrolling kindergarten students. And what we did was, we did it for a at-risk population, because we could not build a full program out. So we decided to go where the need was most necessary. And in doing that, surveys were put out, programming was done, and in the end, the board agreed that was the best direction to go. So right now, we're running a four-year pilot. We're in year two. So, and so far, so good. And what we're going to be doing is following that cohort along. So once they leave, well, the first group is in first grade now, once they progress to third grade and start testing, we can compare those that were in the full-day program and those that were not. And hopefully, they're on par. So, and we did that to help close that gap that we found when students were transitioning from kindergarten, you know, being kindergarten-ready, and then first grade, and then third grade, second grade and third grade-ready.
Thank you.
In your first interview, you mentioned using online surveys to gather input and feedback from families. Please describe strategies other than online surveys that you have used to seek the perspectives of multiple stakeholders. Please specifically address how you did or would ensure that you hear the voices of families who speak languages other than English.
Well, one thing is, I live in the community. So I put the superintendent hat on at 5:30, 6:00 AM, and I take it off at 6:00 PM, and then I go home. And just cutting the grass, seeing my neighbors. My neighborhood, my neighbors are middle-school students, along with my daughter. Across the street, they're kindergarten students. So just being in a neighborhood, shoveling snow this year every day, cutting the grass, and being around at the gym, grocery stores, I hear what the community wants, because I'm part of that community. I don't think, and I could be wrong, but I don't think parents who speak a different language than English have any other interests than wanting the best for their children also. I, when I was younger, I grew up in a very diverse neighborhood, and all the parents wanted the exact same thing for us, all of us, is opportunity, opportunity, opportunity. And they wanted a better life for their sons and daughters. So I don't think they want anything different. However, people from different backgrounds, poverty, or culturally difference, or anything, sometimes have problems communicating to the schools what their needs are. And I think we need to do things that welcome people into the schools outside of the regular school day, or before school starts in the summer, open houses, because a lot of times, people may not have had the best experiences when they were in school. And the one thing that we all have in common is, we went to school. So we all have some point of reference. Everyone hasn't been a dentist, or a doctor, or a truck driver. We don't know what it's like to drive for UPS or FedEx. But we do have a school experience. And I go back to mine. And I try to realize that when my mom came into school to talk about little Jimmy, how she was welcomed. And sometimes she would come up and say, "Oh, that wasn't a good experience," or "that wasn't, or that was good." I try to make every interaction between parent and school district employee positive. So I don't think there's any difference in if you speak another language other than English. But we have to have, if we need translators, at the front. I mean, I was in a district in Massachusetts where it was 99% Spanish-speaking, and when I got there, the front did not speak Spanish. That was an immediate correction we had to make. So, once again, I don't think there's any difference in the needs. I think it's how it's communicated, and we all just want the best for our families. And once again, I'm a parent in the district.
In your first interview, you described a very hands-on approach to your work in your current district. In what specific ways, if at all, would you adjust your managerial approach to be an effective leader of a system that is more than six times the size of your current district?
One of the things is, I've worked in corporations, both public and private, large and small. When I worked for Coca-Cola, it was perceived by the Coke industry as a small group. So I did multiple analytical report, sales... So I did multiple analytical report, sales, marketing jobs. When I would fly down to Atlanta, the home base, someone would do just one single report. That's all they would focus on. And I would run from floor to floor, meeting with everyone, because I touched on all their jobs. In a district that I'm in now, I have to be hands-on, because we're lean and mean. We're nimble. We have to be, for funding reasons. I'm amazed at the supports that you have here. It's almost overwhelming. It's like, wow, they have this, they have that. It's like a dream come true. And I know, being here, you may say, "Oh, well, we need more." But I was telling the group I met with earlier, I said, "You know, there's always situations where you want improvement." But when I first started in my district, I took my assistant into the district that I was working in, in Philadelphia, because he was complaining about facilities. You know, our buildings were built in the early 90s. When I was in Philadelphia, they were built in the 1890s. And I said, "This is what's here." So you have a lot of great resources here, and it's amazing, the resources you have. And I went from various companies where they had similar resources, and it's amazing what you can get done. In my district, I have to be hands-on, only because that's the nature of where I am. I don't micromanage. I think building staff, principals in particular, or leaders of their buildings, they're the CEOs of their building. And I want people in place who are experts in their field. I don't know everything. I try to provide the guidance, the leadership. I work with the board, and trying to keep that direction and focus in place. You don't want me coming into your building and assigning teachers classrooms. That's not my role. My role is to keep everyone on mission and on task, and hold everyone accountable using various metrics.
In our first interview, we learned quite a bit about your work to improve the operational side of your school district. Now we'd like to turn to teaching and learning specifically. Please describe your efforts you led to improve educational outcomes in your district. What were the results, and how have you applied your learning about what worked and what didn't work to your leadership as a superintendent?
Well, operations is only one part. That's how I grew up in schools. However, real, what I found when I got to my district was that there were some concerns or unevenness in the elementary ed areas. We had competing elementary schools. So what I ended up proposing, and which we ended up doing, is realigning our grades. So instead of having competing elementary programs, I realigned the schools with my staff to be a, virtually a pre-K through 2-building, 3 through 5, 6 through 8, and then high school. Because the programming, for example, a STEM program where you're doing gardening, looks much different for a kindergarten-through-second grader than it does to a 3- through 5th grader. You know, in kindergarten, you're saying, "Please don't eat the worms." And in 4th and 5th grade, you're building salads, you're talking about the stems, the cells, and things like that. So we were then able to redirect and refocus our resources in those areas. The areas where it may not have worked well in my past working, was trying to move too fast. Putting on that "I'm in charge" hat, and then saying, "We're going to do this," without taking people along that path on why we're doing it. I was taught a long time ago that when you're explaining something, you should take them along your thought process. And a lot of times, the people you're talking to will get to that end before you get there and say, "Oh, you know what? We need to realign our schools." I said, "Oh, I'm glad you said that. Here's my flip chart. Look what we're proposing. We're proposing to realign our schools." So trying to move too fast when I first started off, because, you know, that's a good idea, that's common sense, sometimes it doesn't work. You have to get buy-in. And once again, I do that through surveys, I do that through speaking with people involved, and just having advocates on my side. Sometimes I'll sit back and let them have the discussion, hoping, hopefully, they'll come to the same conclusion that we all do, and then we get that buy-in. I don't need to be the driving force always behind that.
Thank you. Number five, how would you determine the strengths and capabilities of our key administrative staff?
Well, I don't like to use my gut. I like to use basic business metrics. You know, things that help, things that are business drivers. So for example, the operations side, or academic, no system. I'll get off operations, I'll go with academics. Are we meeting annual growth? Are we meeting the academic expectations of the grade level? Things like that. So, observations. Classroom attendance. Attendance is a major factor when people are happy coming to work. If people are coming to work, they're happy. If people start taking off, taking too many sick days, something's going on. But really looking at the academic driving factors, metrics. So if I did the review, or if you did the review, you would come to the same conclusion. Not using arbitrary, "I like you, I think you're doing a good job." No. Show me true metrics of where you've achieved, where you fell short, and where we can do better. So if any of us did the evaluation, excuse me, we would come up to the same conclusion. Because what happens is, when you start going with your gut, you get biases. "Oh, I like you, I understand you were sick three weeks," and whatever. That doesn't work. You have to go with metrics that the person you're evaluating is also aware of, so that they can achieve and know what the expectations are along the way.
Thank you.
Sorry. What processes do you use to gather feedback on the effectiveness of programs or initiatives? Give us a recent example of how you gathered feedback, for what purpose, and most importantly, what you did with the results.
Well, we tried to do a program at the high school. It was district-wide, but it was really focused at the high school called Blazer Summer. My district is Daniel Boone Blazers, so Blazer Summer. And it was a summer program camp with various programs. They had math, science, sports, music, cooking, and we did not do a good job of structuring it and setting it up. We modeled it off of other districts who had it going for years. And we had teacher buy-in, but we spent so much time designing the program, we never got community buy-in. And then the cost of the program, really, we priced ourselves out of the summer camp market. And we ended up folding the program. We tried it for two years, it just didn't work. So maybe, taking a look back at it, we should have went to the public and found what the current demand was for those types of programs. Because just because it works somewhere else, you know, 40 minutes away, doesn't mean it's going to work in where we are in this district. So learning that, the programs that remained were the camps where they had bases in the school, cheerleading, band, you know, things like that, that were always there in the summer. We didn't have to recruit people in. The students were there practicing in the summer anyway. But those programs like the baking didn't have people's interest where we thought they would. We assumed, and when we did that, we failed.
How do you define prioritize and maintain critical support services for the district when facing potential budget reductions? Which of those critical support services would you protect, no matter the objections, when making budget reduction recommendations to the board?
I live in a budget-reduction world. When I first arrived at the district, transportation was contracted out, nutrition services were contracted out. And when I got there, I suggested that we contract out our custodial maintenance. In my world, the retirement system is brutal on school districts. It's called PISers, where pretty much every year, we're spending about a million more dollars going to the retirement system. So we try to find creative ways where we can still provide services and lessen the impact on the district. I'm also hit with stifling higher taxes. In Pennsylvania, we have to raise our local taxes, our milages, and we can't keep increasing it, because, once again, we're hurting the community that we're serving by higher taxes. So when looking at programming, I do everything possible not to touch the classroom. I've climbed in dumpsters, looking at how much trash is in the trash can, so we can limit our trash pickups. And I could tell you, it's $30 to pick up per can, three times a week, so we've reduced it to one day a week. We're trying to do everything possible. We've done rerouting of buses, staggering routes, combining routes, looking at increasing our food participation, because we get rebates on higher participation rates, looking at volunteers, a lot more grants. We've done a Safe Schools grant, first time we've received that for equipment. So just because we're looking at cost savings or reductions, doesn't mean we want to cut back on services. We can't. Because what's going to happen is, in the end, our test results and our achievements are going to decline, because we're saving money, and we can't do that. You can't offset one with the other. So hopefully, you find a good balance with that.
So under what circumstances would you consider eliminating an extracurricular or co-curricular program, and have you had to do this in the past?
No participation. What I looked at, one, I have not had to do that in the past. Going forward, we are looking at reducing some of the extracurriculars and maybe bringing others on. So our extracurriculars are contracted. So negotiations are coming up next year. So we're looking at, what's the participation in all these sports? And are there others that we could replace them with, or just overall eliminate, because students no longer want to, I don't know, be in the debate club? I would love to bring fencing in. So I reached out to the students, the different clubs in the area. I love fencing. I like to bring it in. But right now, we don't have instructors and the infrastructure to build it. We were looking at criteria of at least 10 students wanting the club. And then we pay stipends for teachers to run the clubs, letting that stipend be on hold for at least three years, so the club could build capacity. And if it lasts, then we could do a stipend. For the first two years, it would be volunteer, and then the third year, it would be a paid stipend position. And not jumping right into a paid stipend right away, because a small group of students wants the club. So it has to be something sustainable. And one example for that would be junior ROTC. When I came on board, there was no junior ROTC program. A teacher stepped up, said, "I want to do it." It's done an incredible job. And this would be the second, or two and a half years into it, so we're looking at adding it to be a paid stipend position. So that's how, that's one example of how it started with nothing. There was an interest. It's been maintained, it's grown, and now, okay, let's bring it on full-time as a club position. And then something like, and I'll keep saying debate club, but not really. Debate team is not of an interest, let's phase it out.
I have a follow-up question. So when you say your sports are contracted, is that meaning like the stipend thing? Or can you explain a little bit more?
The rates are per experience in the contract. So say a teacher has five years' experience.
Okay.
They're paid based on their experience.
Okay. Okay. How have you engaged with the city and community in your capacity as a district leader?
Well, my district is sort of unique. We're broken up over multiple jurisdictions. So I have AMITD over three schools, I have the state police over one school, and I have another town over another school. What I try to do, whenever I have meetings of interest, bring all those parties in play together. It's too hard to go out one-on-one. It's easier to bring them all together, because we do share boundaries in students. So especially in safety and security issues. I'll invite the two police chiefs and the state police representative in. We have the conversation, and they talk amongst themselves on how they coordinate, because sometimes if there's an emergency, they will cross over boundaries. If it's any other issues, if it's unique to an area, I'll just talk to those city managers or that mayor of that town. We invite them to board meetings, they speak, but generally, we have meetings when needed. Parks, we share parks, common areas. I'll meet with that, or a city manager, or the parks and recreation person, or my facilities person will, to discuss, or athletic director will discuss issues in that area. But we're split among three areas.
All right, number 10. What kind of things have you done to mentor and supervise members of your administrative team? Give us specific examples of what you have found to work the best.
Well, coming from a facilities operations background, I try not to be too heavy on my facilities and operations person. I focus really hard on that. He's a great guy, he's done a great job. More highly skilled technically than I am, but I, so I've been trying to help him with the financial forecasting side. On the other side, on the principals, trying to work with them and showing them that sometimes there's a different approach into dealing with a student issue. I come from a background of working in troubled schools, with troubled students, and very angry Sitting down with a parent and letting them just vent sometimes, and shutting up, and letting them speak their mind, and hearing what their, what their meaning is, not just their words, has gone a long way. And I try to sit down with the principals when they're having these struggling parent conversations, to be with them and say, "Oh, don't say anything. Let this person speak, and you'll hear what they say in their meeting, just because they're yelling. They're not yelling at you, they're yelling at the situation." Or if someone's calling, I say, "Just give me the phone. I will fix the problem." And nine out of 10 times, we end in a handshake and a smile, and they feel respected, and they walk away happy. That's because of my background. I'm used to working in situations where there's a lot of animosity sometimes, and feeling of lack of respect. Working with professional staff, teaching them that response time back to parents is important, because usually they're waiting on your call or email. And just calling them back, or emailing them back, saying, "I will get back with you within an hour," and doing that. Or saying, "I'm working on it, give me some time," and staying in touch with them. Because once again, I'm a parent also, and I've been on that other end, waiting for that call. And more than 24 hours is a lifetime sometimes, because it's dire, because it's your child. Teaching them that we are all our school district, from the bus driver, to the custodian, to the food person, to the teacher, to the secretary. The people who call don't know Daniel Boone. Oh, they may. They know that James Harris is the superintendent, and they know that my secretary Kathy is going to call them back. They know that I'm going to call them back. But how they're treated is how Daniel Boone treated them. And that's what I tried to relay to everyone, that we're all one unit. And teaching that skill is probably the hardest, because we have to smile, we have to treat people with respect, and get back to them, and respond to their inquiries, because to them, it's an emergency. That's why they're calling. No one ever calls to say, "Hey, great job." Well, sometimes.
Okay. What are your guiding educational principles and beliefs as you lead a culturally and economically diverse district such as Osseo Area Schools? Please reference specific researchers or writings that have guided those beliefs.
Well, once again, I treat every child as if they're my own. I would not want to place my children in any situation that I feel is unsafe or dangerous, or not to their academic future success. And writings and research, I'm studying right now the impact of gentrification has in schools for my dissertation. And I was surprised in doing the research, because I thought gentrification was a great thing. But it's turning out that it has very little impact on the positive outcomes academically in schools, because of schools' reputations. So I don't have any specific readings or research. I'm still working on it. But the data that I'm finding is, the schools carry that negative reputation a lot longer than we think we do sometimes. And when the community changes over from one of low income to higher income, doesn't necessarily reflect immediately back into the schools. So to say we need more money sometimes isn't the answer. Sometimes we need more understanding and caring and service to that population that's already there. Sometimes we need more understanding and caring and service to that population that's already there.
Okay. How do you weigh the rights of all students and teachers to have a safe learning environment against mandates, against suspensions or other punishments?
Well, I don't like that other checkbox on the weekly write-ups that you receive. It's too arbitrary. You don't know what it means. And a lot of times, it's someone, a teacher or someone in the building getting frustrated with that child. I look at the write-ups weekly from my different schools and I track them by teacher, by incident. And in doing that, you sort of get the idea, especially when you compare the same grade, because those teachers have the same students. Something's going on where how could the same, how can a different teachers have the same kids and have totally different responses from those children? Something's going on in the classroom management side. We have to make sure that when kids come into school, they're feeling good about themselves. My principals always seek out, when, when they're at the doors in the morning, the child who isn't smiling. Just, "How are you?" "Hey, have a great day." And you'll see them kind of snap out of it sometimes. Because you don't want them to taking that whatever negative they came from and bringing that negative into school. It's being proactive. Just like you see a student sitting by themselves at the lunchroom at breakfast or at lunch, going over and just saying, "Hey, I hope you have a good day today." That doesn't cause anything. And I think that's one of the ways that we can make schools safer is by making students feel better about being there.
Okay. What are the standards you use for judging whether a board of education is doing its job?
Yeah, that's a question. Never judged my board before. I think if the board is aware and aligned to what the district needs, where the conversations are, "I know we have some concerns. How could we, like I do, help move and smooth out the process of getting where we need to be?" The, the board and the administration should never be at odds. We should always be on the same page. I communicate weekly to my board and sometimes I give them too much information. Sometimes not enough, but sometimes I overload them with information. And the information that I give them, and I gave a sample of the report in my little binder that I showed, whenever one of them asks me a question twice, it goes into my weekly report because there is a concern from at least one of them wanting to know about this area. It's nice that the board comes to, board members show up to events. I know the board members all have different interests. It could be music. It could be hockey. It could be, you know, basketball. It could be football. It could be theater. But seeing board members at events, trust me, goes a long way with building staff because the staff in those buildings work very hard to put on those performances, coach the teams. And seeing the board members just standing in the back smiling makes everyone feel comfortable and that we're all on the same page and we're vested in the performance of the students. Coming out to award ceremonies, just popping in, the, the little concerts that happen, Christmas concerts. Those things go a long way. When you don't have the board showing up to those local events, it, it, it's like they're not really vested. They're here just to oversee, direct, and then move on. It helps when you're voting in a full-day kindergarten program. When you're invited to come read to the kindergarten class, you show up and read a Dr. Seuss story. It's a pledge for Dr. Seuss. So that's how I, I think the, the board and the administration and the school district can be successful together. Because we're all, we all want the best for kids. And showing up and being, and participating goes a long way.
Thank you.
A four-year college education is not desired by or attainable by everyone and is not needed for the majority of jobs in this state. How do you plan for, provide for, and measure the academic success of those students who wish to develop skills in other areas?
Well, there's nothing wrong with not going to college right out of, doing, going to college after high school. I didn't go. I joined the military. I joined the military a year after, well, nine months after leaving high school. It was the best thing I've ever done. It, it made me mature. It helped me grow up. And then when I got out of the military, I went to school. And it gave me the self-discipline and the confidence to complete college that I did not have when I got out of high school. If I wanted to go into a trade, there's nothing wrong with, if you can in high school. Now, we have a county trade school where our students can go to once they become juniors and, and, and learn trades. It's masonry, plumbing, electrical, that they can follow that goal. There's, so there's nothing that says you have to go to college. It's providing the opportunities for the students to pursue whatever endeavors they want to do. I think that's our role. And hopefully, we make some good plumbers. This is very hard to find a plumber these days. Very hard to find good quality mechanics. And there are jobs out there that are honest, pay a great wage, and there's opportunities. In my area, we're more agriculture. And I go out to the dairy farms. And a lot of the equipment is all mechanized. And the, the farmers are saying they can't find employees to come in and fix their robotic equipment that helps milk the cows. So they're reaching back to the schools and say, "You need to help us find students who are mechanically inclined to come out and work with us." And they can come visit the farms. They could go work on the combines, the equipment, and be employed. When I was in Indiana, Toyota was nearby. Toyota would bring in cars and for the kids could work on the actual Prius or the Tundra in the shops. And when they would graduate, they could go work for Toyota. So those are just a few opportunities. And cosmetology is a big one also. You can go right from high school and open up your own or be a cosmetologist and earn a livable wage and make, you know, pretty good. So I think college is right for some students, but not right for everyone. Like I said, it wasn't right for me the first year of school. And then I took some retail jobs, went around town, tried to, and saw that I needed to fix myself. I needed to be a better person. So I joined the military, became a military policeman. It's the best thing I've ever done. Wouldn't recommend it for everyone. But for some people, that self-discipline, that working with others, building a team, works.
Okay, number 15. What has been the most stressful situation you've had as a district leader? How do you handle personally stressful situations?
I, I, I think the most stressful ones come when I deal with a situation where a staff member has hurt a child. Because my first instinct isn't the legal and correct one to do in my position. So that's when the procedures and policies we have in place, I have to follow to remedy that. And sometimes the remedy is not as fast as I would like. Because we've all taken about to do no harm to children and to work and be good people. And at times, people don't follow that. And being in my position, I see a lot of things that I can't say publicly that we have to work through. And that's the toughest because I have no one really to talk to about it. Can't share. It's confidential. And working through those situations are the worst. And then you deal with the children and the emotional needs and getting them the support that's needed. That's the toughest. Stressful situations other than that, weapons coming into schools, trying to figure out how to prevent it through mental health services, safety and security in the building. Parents upset that they feel that we're failing their children. And I realize, looking through the background, we did. That's tough. And trying to correct it moving forward.
Okay. We experience different achievement levels across our buildings that are predictable by the socioeconomic status of our residents. How do you support the students of both sides of the economic coin?
Well, you have to look at what resources are needed and where they're failing or falling behind. Because you, you can't give everyone the same support because they may not need it. I saw an old picture, well, an old picture years ago where it had three children looking through a ball fence. And, and you know, and I thought, because you were smiling. It had, this, you know, they, they were looking at a baseball game and the holes were at a certain height and the kids were at different heights. So they were standing on little milk crates. And it said, you know, "This is unfair." And then the milk crates, "Well, this is equality or equal, or equals all the same milk crates. Equity is different size milk crates." But what's fair is knocking the, the fence down. So I, I try to knock the fence down and remove those barriers that those children's, or children are having problems achieving their goals. However, that's not realistic sometimes. So we have to realign our resources to where the needs are. And that's as simple as I can say. So a building may not have five equal reading specialists, you know, split between every building. One building may have eight or one has two just because of the need. And then looking at the needs again, realigning that. So if you look at my plan that I submitted, it's always, you know, review, plan, analyze, and then review, and then adjust. Because you can't just spread everything out equally thinking that's going to solve the problem. You have to focus your resources, whatever they might be, into those areas to get the growth and support that's needed. So that's the best answer I can give you.
Thank you.
Sometimes I'm not politically correct. I try to be, but it's, we need to realign our resources where, where the needs are there.
How do you define prioritize and maintain critical support services for the district when facing budget constraints?
Well, once again, try not to have impact on the classroom. If I can do something and make a change and save money and no one notices, they would have really needed it in the first place. So it, it all depends on what it is. And so, for example, I like to do a, a reading coach. Through the realignment of my schools, following the Princeton model where we align all the grades for building, we were able to come down staffing teachers. However, we didn't furlough or lay anyone off. We took those positions and went to the board and said, "Can we just realign our people and provide, move them to service areas where we need be?" So no one's going to lose their job. We're coming down to school and we can still add more resources, focused instructional support where needed. And they said, "Go for it." Because it's budget neutral. And that's what we've done. So you have to realign some things, tweak some things, and be honest with yourself. Where are we going to get our best return? And I love working in early childhood. But I also know that the, the senior level students also need support. So there's, everyone's needy. Everyone needs something. But sometimes you have to make those tough decisions.
In your judgment, what are the three most critical things a good principal does?
Supports their teachers. Supports the custodial maintenance staff in the building so the building is clean and welcoming. And knows the students' names, is present at the functions. And that the parents feel that they have an advocate for their children in the building. Because if the principal does not have the teacher's support, the principal should go. It, it doesn't matter who they are, how long they've been there, what their reputation is. If the, if the principal is counterproductive to the success of the building, the principal needs to be removed. The teachers are the first line of support that those students have. And the teachers should be supported 100%. So if a teacher comes in, or I'm sorry, if a principal comes in and says, "It's my way of the highway. This is how I want it to go." That principal is not a right fit for that building. Even though those ideas may be great, maybe what is needed, the way that person presents themselves and how they're operating will be ineffective and you'll get pushback in that building.
Thank you.
How do you provide the oversight and/or lead others who have direct responsibilities in a district this size? Specifically, how do you hold others accountable for delivering the mission of the district?
Well, same as before. You have various measurable metrics that you review. You can't go by your gut. You can't go by a feeling. You have to have tried and true data that you use to evaluate people and say, "Well, this is where we need to be." For example, the buses need to be on time. Well, we want to monitor that. We want teacher attendance to be X percentage. We have to monitor that. We want student attendance to be so much. We want teachers to communicate home to families so much. We have to monitor that. We have to put numbers and levels where we want them to be that we think are effective to that, and we track that. You don't want to have a person who's my favorite getting away with things when someone else can't. That, that isn't right. And that builds animosity within the ranks. So everyone's treated fairly. When you're reviewed, you have to bring artifacts to show how you achieved those things. If you don't bring them, then you didn't do it. You, you have to provide data and support and evidence that you're doing what is necessary to move the district forward.
If we were to ask your direct reports or administrative team to describe your qualities or characteristics in three adjectives, what would they say? How about your teachers, classified staff, and board members?
I never lose it. I think I've seen so much in schools that I can't be surprised too much. I'm very calm in handling situations. Now, when I get home, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh. I can't believe that happened." But when I'm working, I, I don't get rattled. We've had instances with students bringing weapons into schools. We have procedures in place and we have to follow those. Teachers, teachers would probably say I'm a little standoffish and aloof. I don't like to go into classrooms and disrupt them because I know how hard it is to get the kids on task, especially the little ones. And when I show up, sometimes I like, I like to play with the kids. It's fun, especially the little ones. And I kind of get them off task sometimes. So unless I'm invited in, like, I'll peek in and wave or something. And all of our doors are now shut and locked because of all of our procedures. I can't just walk in. It throws their lessons out, out of whack. I do do a thing with, called Golden Apples, where I go out once a month and I, and I do a certificate. I take pictures with teachers because people have recommended them because they've gone above and beyond. And I go with the principal and my IT director and we go in together and, you know, we, we, we disrupted that one day. And we, we thanked the teacher and I read what the student said about him or her and they start to cry. And it's fun. It's, it's, it's a positive thing. But normally, I don't like to go into classrooms. So I think teachers would like to see me more in their classrooms. Now, I'll, I'll pop up at lunchtime. I'm at all the events, the plays, the musicals, the games, sporting events. But in the buildings, unless something's happening, I try to stay out of their way. Now, if it's art and the door is open, I'll pop in and see Mr. Jacobs or someone and, and say hi. But I think they would like to see me more. I mean, I'm at this building and they see me in between. But I don't like to go into the classrooms. Also, I have two kids in school and my daughter likes seeing me in the classroom and my seventeen-year-old son hides from me in the classroom. Other staff, I would think the support staff would say that I'm grounded. That I'm just, they could pop in and talk to me whatever, anytime they want. I take my own trash out most of the time. I feel like I'm bothering people when they're helping me. Like, they're vacuuming my office. I say, "No, I'll take care of it. Don't worry about it. Just take care of someone else before you do me." I like to take the staff to lunch maybe once a month just to get out of the office and just to chit chat offline to see what's, what's going on with them. We have holiday parties and, you know, and they joke with me and tease me and we, it, it's, it's a good relationship. I know about their families. They know about mine. It helps build that relationship. So if someone needs something, it's not a surprise to me. If someone gets married or a spouse passes away, we, we all chip in and, and support that person. So we're, we're a team. Because like I said, we're, we're a small district and we're nimble. We have to support each other. We have to step in. So if someone's having a problem, you know, we can help. They knew something was going on with me because I've never taken a vacation day in two years. So when I took time off to come here, So when I took time off to come here, it set off flags for everyone, so me being here made the front page of the newspaper back home. So, I, yeah, it's, it's interesting. We all know what's going on with everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, what are the benefits and drawbacks of ESA and Common Core curriculum?
Being from different, working in different states in education, I understand why it's being done. Because, just like in Oklahoma, West Virginia, and Kentucky now, teachers are striking for better benefits and better pay and better supports in the classroom. The home rule, where districts are run locally, they are different. In, in, in my town, there's one, two, three, four, maybe six districts on a six mile stretch, where you can move if you moved into the area for work. So we compete, we have to be a district of destination, because we're competing with other districts. My son, for example, is now a junior in high school. He's been in about nine different schools in my career. He started kindergarten when I got involved at schools, and I, and I moved, and he's relocated, you know, nine different, half dozen different times, different schools. And he's told me which states and schools were good, which schools were bad. He was in two different schools his freshman year of high school. He's, yeah, he started in one and ended in another, he started in Ohio and ended in New Jersey. And he said, the New Jersey program was totally different for ninth grade than where he was in Ohio. And now he's in Pennsylvania with me, where he's going to graduate, and he's saying, this is much different than what he was doing in New, um, New Jersey, or Ohio, much different. So, you don't want students being tagged or labeled as not proficient, because they're coming from a certain state, or a certain area of the country. So trying to make all that even is very understandable. But I really think the people who put the programs together never taught a class, or never really was involved at schools on the grass, on, on, on the local level. Because some of the things they're requiring don't make sense. So, like I said, I understand why it's being done. But, like, no child left behind, every child succeeds, race to the top. Those are all things that a business person puts in place, cause there's metrics base. And the students aren't all equal, they all have certain needs. And one of the things that isn't looked at a lot is growth. Growth is extremely important. It's not just the overall outcome, it's how you, you're getting them to the end. And sometimes a student comes to a teacher far below where that child should be, and that teacher does an incredible job getting that child multiple grade levels, but maybe not where that child should be when they leave. And they should be applauded for what they've done, and it doesn't really take that into account a lot of times, and that's sad. But, once again, I understand why those things are being put in place. And they tie it to funding, so it's tough.
Why should we hire you to be the next superintendent?
Well, I look at things sometimes a little bit differently as I'm told. Which I don't know I'm doing it, I'm just taking my own perspective on things. I have a big heart. I'm a parent, I'm a business person. Now I'm an educator. And for years, I never said I was an educator, I always said, I'm a business person. I'm an educator. When I worked in Ohio, I was handed a math curriculum and told to go teach it. I was the ops guy. I was handed this program because I was one of the few African American males in the company, and it was from, it was from the NBA. And the program was based on statistics for basketball players. I don't know anything about basketball. But I put this program together with the team, and I won Educator of the Year. And I, when they gave me the word, I said, I just did what you asked me to do. I, I taught this program. I didn't know they gave me the toughest of the tough kids to teach. But I did it. And I did it well, so I'm told. I, once again, run my district, run my programs, as if my own kids are a part of everything that I do. And I want them to have the best of everything that I could possibly give. I think that schools are great places. When, I wrote an article, I think you may have a copy of it, about my first six years of school. And when my younger sister read it, she was like, I can't believe you remembered every teacher's name, every situation, every knucklehead thing that you did. And it was about me apologizing to all my former teachers about how bad I was in school, and I'm sorry, and it went from kindergarten to sixth grade, I included the office secretary in it, and I said, I'm sorry, Mrs. White, I didn't mean to do those things. Pe- kids remember teachers. Kids remember the feeling they had riding the bus in the morning, they remember the school lunch person, they remember their fifth grade teacher. If I could make those students have positive memories and feel that they can leave my schools feeling they could do anything in the world, I will do whatever I can to make that happen. Every year in my district, I have a superintendent scholarship, where I give away ten thousand dollars. And it started with my salary. So far, I've given away twenty thousand dollars to students. And, it's, it's the best, and I get lots of thank you cards, but I do it because these are the students that may not get the high academic awards, or may not get the football scholarships. These are kids, based on their criteria, just wrote an essay saying what they learned for twelve years of school, and what they got out of it, and how they're going to be as adults moving out of school. I think that my methods work. I keep being labeled as non, I'm labeled as non-traditional, because twenty seven years ago, I decided not to major in education, but behavioral science in school. I studied cultural anthropology for four years, went on to get my MBA. I used my degree to sell products for Coca-Cola, GlaxoSmithKline, and Bristol Myers. Realizing later that I like working in education. I've been doing education now for a dozen years. But because twenty seven years ago, I did not check the education box, I'm labeled as non-traditional. There are a lot of people like me out there, who are former chemists, business people, who would love to go into schools and teach. The funniest thing is, I could teach at the universities, and I have. I teach a principals course at a university. But I can't teach a business course in my own high school, cause I can't get certified in my school. But I can be superintendent. But I teach a principals leadership course, on how principals can be leaders in their buildings. My first cohort just finished. And they're all applying to my district now, cause we have three open positions for assistant principals, and they're welcome. I have enthusiasm. I've dedicated the rest of my life to education. Like I said, I'm pursuing my doctorate, now in educational leadership. And, I'm learning every day as I go. I don't come in with a plan. I have an objective, and you'll see that in my presentation tonight. I don't come in with, this is what I'm going to do. I'll take the resources that are here and build you the best education model possible. I will never ask you for a dollar. I will probably give some back, uh, maybe. But I will build the best educational facility site we can do with our budget. And that's what I do. I don't come in saying, well, if I had another three million dollars, I would do this, if I had six million dollars, I would do that. Oh, that's why it's not working, no. I will take what we have, and all I ask is that you allow myself and the administration to be nimble, to be flexible, and to be creative in what we do. And we will take those dollars and use them in the most effective manner possible. There will never be any audit or report saying we are wasteful, misappropriating, we don't do that. That's what I do. I build the best programs for what the resources that we have. That have been doing it for ten, twelve years now. But because I did not check that education box twenty seven years ago, I'm labeled as non-traditional. So, I think you should hire me, because I'm a darn good superintendent.
Okay, thank you. What questions do you have for us?
What are your expectations of the new superintendent? Cause I've been following this district for a while, you know, you're, the superintendent who's leaving is fantastic. What are your expectations moving forward with her departure?
I, I think one of the main expectations in a new superintendent is a superintendent who can come into the district and, and learn and understand what is going on, and being able to provide, uh, you know, within a reasonable amount of time, your thoughts on, on things to improve. But really, it's, you know, within the first year, is come onboard into the district in a manner where you earn the respect uh, of staff, of building leadership, and of parents. And, you know, that's not necessarily a small task, uh, but I think that's a big task as people, as you come onboard, you know, into this community, into this system. So, you know, that's one of the expectations. We have a lot of programs going on, we have new curricula, we have new electronic technology, uh, we have issues around building capacity. Those are all major things that a new superintendent is going to have to come up to speed on, and, uh, work with the teams that have been doing a very good job in implementing them, and, and support those teams to make sure that these things get implemented i- in the correct manner, in, in the manner that, uh, is both efficient and effective.
Yeah, and for me, um, the role of the superintendent, I'm counting on you to help me make the best decisions possible for the district. I'm relying on, relying on you and your best judgment, along with cabinet and the team that supports you, your data, your information, to help me come to the best decisions possible. You're gonna be the face of our district, you're gonna be giving, you know, our points of pride, you're gonna be giving interviews with the media, speeches at numerous events, numerous galas, things like that. So, we need you, we need our superintendent to create buy-in. We need our people to believe in you, to have that trust, um, that inspirational leadership, where the entire community jumps onboard, is with Osseo area schools, we're operating together on the same page, both cabinet uh, and principals and site leadership. Everyone needs to be on the same page, so we need the person, the right person, to do that, to create that atmosphere, and move this district forward. We love Kate, Kate is wonderful, she's amazing. But we're, we are, we need to move forward, and so that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, I'd like to add that, um, were Kate not retiring, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I've been, uh, very impressed with her leadership, her professionalism, her deep, uh, knowledge of education, uh, all of her experiences she's had for so many years. And so, um, I know I'm not looking for someone to upset the apple cart and, and throw out all of that good work. Uh, I'm, I personally am hoping that we can find someone that will continue along supporting the initiatives that we've, we've had underway, uh, continuing that good work. And, uh, along the way, while supporting things and while building, um, and encouraging staff and leaders, that we, you know, keep an eye out for those things that we're not doing as well as we could, and, uh, continuing to look for areas of improvement like we always have. And, um, we can always learn more, we can always do better, and, uh, and, um, I think we've had some of those continuous improvement processes underway, and we need to continue those. So I, I guess I'm kind of looking for some stability and continuity, as well as, as some new ideas too, but, um, don't fix what's not broken.
Right.
I would just add, all of those things are very true, um, I would just add that as a superintendent of a district as large as ours, you, um, would be expected to be on pretty much all the time. There are times where, um, things happen in our communities, and, at our schools, unexpectedly, almost every day. And you or your support staff have to be ready to be there for that school, and to attend to their needs and support their, their staff in the school, the students. And so, um, that's just an expectation of our uh, staff and community that I think we've grown accustomed to, um, with Kate, as, as a leader here, that she is always available, and, um, like she often says, you know, I'll meet you where you are. If you need something, if you're having a problem, if you have a crisis, she's really willing and able to, um, to work with you. And that's really important to our staff and our community.
I'll just add one last thing, I guess, the, I would say that the cabinet that surrounds you is very strong. There is, there will be some transitions going on with people retiring and new people coming aboard. Um, but to lean on them and to listen to them, to what we've been implementing in this district, and really learning from them, the initiatives and things that we've been doing, as well as principals and site leaders, that will be very important to just be able to listen and learn from them as a new person coming in.
Yeah, I think one of the things I learned being superintendent is you need to know when to shut up, and, and listen, and it, it's interesting, where you get to a certain level professionally, you realize you don't have the power you thought you had, and you, it's reversed. You know, forty years, oh my god, thirty years ago, when I was, you know, younger, my first job, I had to listen. I said, you know what, in thirty years, I'm the boss. Now I'm the boss, and it's reversed, now I have to listen more than, so it's really interesting.
Any other questions for us?
No, I'll be back this evening at eight PM Central time.
So, a, a, a couple other questions, just, just as follow-up. Tell us a little bit more on, on your thoughts regarding early childhood development, and how that can impact, uh, the education system overall?
Well, I believe, well, it, it's proven that children need to be able to read on career level by third grade, because that, oh, by second grade. Because after second grade, kids are being taught not to read, but reading to learn. So, if they're falling behind there, they're automatically at a disadvantage moving forward, cause then the pace just accelerates. So we have to protect specific cohorts. And that cohort is second grade going into third grade, and then that, uh, eighth grade going into ninth grade. Because both of those areas, second and eighth, and others in between, but really, those are those transition years where students are sort of changing how education is delivered to them. So the early childhood, working with parents, I was in a district once where we used to deliver a basket of books whenever a child was born to the hospital. And we worked with parents on how to read to children at, from day one. We also got a birthday cake too, so it was kinda cool. Letting the parents know that it's, it's time to start now. So when the student comes into school, it's not the first time that child is hearing about the ABCs, or learning basic syntax. They're learning, they're ready to go, it's like getting a running start. Cause if you don't protect that cohort, you're putting more and more resources to get them to that level, which is very expensive. That, then that eighth grade group going into their freshman year, that affects our graduation rate. That affects what programs that we have, instead of having an IB or an AB, or an AP program, we're doing remedial support. And if you talk to the colleges and universities now, they're doing so much remedial support to get our graduates ready for college. So that's the next area we also need to focus on, cause I don't think the high schools and the colleges are aligned that well either. But going back to early childhood, getting the, the preschool programs ready, getting the parents ready, get, getting them ready for kindergarten, making sure that the kindergarten group is ready to go. ready to go. In the schools that I was in, that where I worked in the building, we would retain some kindergartens, because they weren't ready to go yet to first grade. Parents didn't like it, but we had to say, "This is what is required, and the child needs more support." And, but I've also dealt with parents who did a lot of intervention and support work before the child got to kindergarten, and they were, they could have jumped right through kindergarten. And sometimes, they didn't make the birthday cutoff, but test-wise, they were more than capable of going into the kindergarten program, maybe at four years old, or, you know, not at the right birthday cutoff. So it all depends on the child, it all depends on the assessments. But getting those students ready to go for kindergarten, offering the supports, and then tracking that cohort, like you're doing in this district also, making sure that they're ready to start learning by reading. And then embedding reading in all other subjects, in math, science, social studies, you embed that into the programming, so making sure that the child can do the work. So they have to be able to read.
So tell me a little bit about how you would go about building a relationship with us, with the board members, as a group and individually.
Well, one is inviting you out to the functions with me. Because a lot of times, it's lonely standing in the back of the room. My daughter calls me that creepy guy in the gray coat, because I always stand in the back of the room for her musicals. Going on school tours, walking around together individually, letting the teachers and the staff see you and ask questions. Being responsive to your questions, being involved, just living in, just being part of the community. We all live in the community together, so just being a good neighbor. We don't have different interests. We're all here to have the same interests. So when superintendents and boards have disagreements, it, to me, doesn't make any sense, because we're all here for the same purpose. So that, maybe that's my business background, but we're all here together. When I was at Coke, we were there to sell a beverage product. When I was at Mead Johnson, we were selling Infamil baby formula. We all, no one brought a Pepsi into Coke, no one brought, you know, Similac into Infamil. We just didn't do that, because out of respect for the product and the brand and what we were all doing, we're all on the same page. So, building a relationship with the board comes over time, where you ask me a question, I ask you a question, there's a response, and there's a relationship building. That's just how it works. Unless we're going to do like a 90-day fiancee thing, and we just get married right away, and then we work it out, it doesn't work. We have to build that relationship, and I think that happens over time through various experiences.
Any other questions anyone wants to follow up on or add?
So I have a follow-up from my first, very first question. And you gave us an example of how you brought full-day kindergarten back into your district. And you said it was a four-year pilot plan, and it's been in place for two years. Can you talk about how that data has looked over those two years that you've implemented? Have you looked at data in those first two years?
Just how we expected. We knew that those students were not where we needed them to be moving forward. And it's been going so well, we're looking at adding another possible full-day class, because there is a need for it. It was a no-brainer, really. I mean, we all know, if you give a child longer instruction, more in-depth instruction, that child is going to perform better. It was a matter of finding funding for it. I think sometimes we make excuses on why we don't fund things, trying to talk ourselves out of it, but the reality is, we know it's the right thing for kids, and it works. What we're still waiting on is the third-grade data, because they're not there yet. So that's the true measure. But you can see the difference when you go to the school in August, when school starts, to May, or April, or even December, how much they've grown over that time. Because those kids at that age are just sponges, and they just want the information, and we have to be prepared to give it to them.
I just have one other question.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit about equity work in your district? What types of professional development do you offer in that regards, and a little bit about equity?
Well, once again, we took the support based on test data and the needs of the students. So in some buildings, we have a lot of support, in some buildings, not as much. Some principals like to kind of collect support and have lots around them, and they can use it however we need. But then looking at the final or mid-year results and test data, we realized that some students, we weren't giving the necessary supports that we needed. We were fine. I was seeing that the higher-performing students in the beginning of the year were sort of being left to their own devices, and we were so focused on the lower-achieving, the more-at-risk student, we were leaving the higher, so then the higher was dropping. So now we're looking at giving supports to the gifted-type student, giving it then more rigor, and also working, bringing those students up, and then the mid-tier, getting them higher. So I think sometimes we forget that there are students who need to be pushed harder because that's what they demand, and we're too focused on the lower-performing. But the lower-performing also needs, so once again, their support's needed all around. So that's what I've looked at within the district, and then trying to realign, as our buildings come down, those extra resources that we have, and then realigning them to where the need is. So it looks like we'll be adding more resources, not to the earliest childhood, but to the three through five grades. And also putting the new hires in place who have expertise in mathematics, because we're finding that that's lacking three through five. So the next principal in that building will have a math background, focusing on that, not a other type of background. We're being strategic with our placements of people based on the needs of those facilities.
Thank you.
Any other follow-ups?
I do have a question. I am wondering, how would, how do you think you would handle, in a district as large as ours, and in our state, there's a lot of mandates and specific cash flows for certain schools, projects, departments, everything? We can't just move money here. It's not easy to do. I mean, sometimes you can, but there's a lot of things that you can't. And, and you've talked a lot about how you have a lot of experience in the financial side of things. How do you think that you would handle not being able to do that, and also relying on our framework in our, I'm sorry, Patricia Magnussen, our cabinet member, has helped to create this framework, and it centered around students, and it's how we, we go back to that for everything. Every decision we make with our money goes there. Can you speak to how you would?
Well, my first district, I worked in, was this size. It was 20,000, 22,000 students, so I'm used to this size, that's how I started. Every state is a little bit different. I started in Indiana, moved to, moved into Ohio, moved into Massachusetts, Philadelphia, now I'm in Pennsylvania. But Philadelphia's really its own entity, and then Pennsylvania. So there's different requirements in each state. You can't just move money from where it's allocated. And you use the funding codes and the streams, and that's how money has to be allocated. That's just compliance and the law. And I understand what you're saying about any act that's done, it has to be in the best interest. There's a matrix, and you use that to determine how it's applied. I do the same thing, where I have funding for one position. I have my special ed director coming to me, I have my IT director coming to me, I have all the principals coming to me, all with a legitimate need. What do we do? The choice was made for it to go to special education, because that keeps us in compliance, because of the workload structure that we, issue that we're having, it has to go there. And that was how that choice was made. So utilizing the resources here, its expertise here, but also making sure that we stay in compliance. But once again, I had one position last year. Everybody jumped on this one assistant principal who was available for six months. He ended up going to the high school, because we had a concern over the transition of eighth graders into the high school. So he built a plan around that, and it was the smoothest transition possible. But then we had to put him back to his other school, but that's where that need was. So I think we all use some sort of matrix in making our decisions, because we don't have unlimited funds, and we can't do whatever we want with them. But using that matrix and using the expertise here and following that same procedure is how I would operate. I have to, there's no real choice.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any final comments?
Well, my father taught me whenever I'm offered a mint to take one. So I will take a mint, just in case. And thank you for having me, and I will see you again this evening at 8:00 PM.
Yep, exactly. Thank you very much. All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Do we have to make them?
What's that? Yeah, so, yeah, before, I just wanted to make a final statement again, but wanted to thank Mr. Harris first.
Thank you.
So those here and those listening online, and please fill, please fill out the forms. We want your feedback. So for Mr. Harris, you have until 5:00 PM, so just over an hour, to fill that out and send it back, and we do appreciate that. The schedule for the remainder of the day, we're going to have a break here between meetings, so we will adjourn this shortly. At 7:00, the public presentations begin. And again, first, I believe, with Dr. Pruitt, and then with Mr. Harris, these kickoff at 7:00 PM. Again, we would invite people to come here and witness it live, as well as watch it on TV and online. Again, we are looking for feedback. Then after that, there will be a break, and there will be school board discussion after that. So that will be the remainder of the evening. And with that, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second? Second by Director Douglas. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, 5:00, nothing. We are adjourned at 3:55 PM. Thank you.